Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of August 26, 2014. I apologize for the slight delay. I'd like to thank the Garden Club for the flowers they always provide for our meetings. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here. Mark Zaffron, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a couple of announcements this evening. The city will hold a four-year remembrance event on Tuesday, September 9, 2014, at 6:00 p.m. on the corner of Clermont Drive and Glenview Drive. Information is available on the city website, www.sanbruno.ca.gov. Also, I'd like to announce that Shelter Creek is having a "Give Blood and Test Drive" event on Saturday, September 6, from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Shelter Creek condominiums, Lot A. You can also get tested to be a bone marrow donor for Be the Match from the National Marrow Donor Program. Refreshments will be served to blood donors at 11:00 a.m., and a barbecue lunch will be served from 12:00 to 2:00. If you want more information, call (650) 873-4400. We have some presentations this evening. First, we're going to receive a presentation from the 2014 San Bruno Sister City Student Exchange delegation to Narita, Japan.
Welcome. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. It's an honor and a pleasure to be here. My name is Miriam Shalit, and I work for San Bruno Cable. It was my privilege to present the city of San Bruno as the delegate to Narita, Japan, our sister city, at the beginning of July this year. Accompanying me on the trip were six students who recently graduated from Parkside Intermediate and two Parkside School representatives, Gordon Hui and Judy Spooner. With me tonight are everyone. In 1956, President Dwight D. Eisenhower first created Sister City International. His reasoning was that people of different cultures could celebrate and appreciate their differences and build partnerships that could lessen the chance of new conflicts. Sister Cities promote cultural, economic, educational, and technical exchanges while fostering international collaboration and cooperation. The idea is to create lifelong friendships that provide prosperity and peace through person-to-person citizen diplomacy. The program is unique in that it involves different segments of the community: local government, businesses, students, and citizen volunteers. Much of what President Eisenhower wished to cultivate is what I experienced. I would like to briefly sum up a week that was chock-full of experiences, flavors, and personalities. If only I could have bottled some of Narita's humidity for you.[224.48][224.48](Laughter.) But I have the next best thing: I have photographs. Here are some pictures that'll give you just a brief overview of our experiences. The mayor of Narita sent a letter and a gift for you, Mr. -- Mary Ruane, which I'd like to present to you now.
I think we better open this.
Okay.
I have kind of an idea what it is. Great big bottle of perfume.[273.33][273.33](Laughter.) Take a look here. It's a bottle.[276.33][276.33](Laughter.) Well, anyway.[278.33][278.33](Laughter.) I'll let you know how it travels.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I feel as if we were given the royal treatment in Narita. They took good care of us by feeding us well, taking into consideration our wishes and desires, and taking us places that we might not have seen on our own. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to have gone and look forward to hosting the Japanese delegation next spring. Now I'd like to introduce Gordon Hui from Parkside Intermediate. Gordon?
Hello. Mayor Ruane, councilman. First, I want to say hello and thank you very much for the experience again for letting us go to Narita. This was my second year going, so I will tell you more about my experience after we have the students speak and also my colleague Judy Spooner speak. But before we start, I actually want to introduce our new principal at Parkside, Ethan Cheever. If you want to come up to say a few words.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come down and meet you tonight. I'll try to be brief, although when I was coming up with my notes of what to say, it ended up becoming about one and a half pages, so I'll go quick. My name is Ethan Cheever, and I'm the new principal at Parkside Intermediate School. A little bit about my background: I grew up in Millbrae, so I'm a local guy. I have a lot of great memories of spending time in San Bruno as a kid, and I still have a number of friends that live in this town. I come from a family of educators. My grandmother was a teacher. My mom is still a teacher in San Mateo. And even my wife is a department chair for the Department of Foreign Languages at Aragon High School in San Mateo. When I'm not at work, I'm usually spending time with my 19-month-old son Jake or my wonderful stepson Oscar. My mom worked for the city of San Bruno for a while as a teacher. And as a fun fact, my mom's principal in Foster City is one of our parents at Parkside, and she helped us out with the hiring panel for Mr. Hui as the assistant principal. I've taught in both middle school and high school levels. I taught in Millbrae at my old -- I'm sorry, my old middle school. From there, I went to East Palo Alto, also in middle school. From there, I went to high school in Hayward, and then I moved from Hayward to Newark as an assistant principal, and now I'm here. Coming to San Bruno is like coming home for me, and I am extremely appreciative of the opportunity to come and work in San Bruno. For me, this is mostly kind of a look, listen, and learn year, along with my newly-promoted assistant principal, Gordon. Gordon's been fantastic so far, and the combination of Gordon and the office staff at Parkside are my right arm. I do not know where we would be without their support and without their help. Having grown up in the area, I'm familiar with Parkside and a lot of what Parkside was like back when I was a student. Since then, I've come to visit the campus, and I saw the campus a few days before graduation. And I spent those couple of days getting to know the school, the students, the staff, the administrative team. And I have to say that I was absolutely blown away at how far Parkside has come from what it was back in the day. The campus is absolutely beautiful. We love the new buildings, although we are hopeful that construction will continue to help alleviate some of our crowding problems. Teachers were amazingly positive and friendly. They exhibited very good practices. Students were responsive to instruction. They were all upbeat, very welcoming. It was truly impressive. And I had the opportunity to meet my predecessors, Angela and Dan. I would like to publicly acknowledge the incredible progress that was made at the campus in terms of climate and culture under their leadership. I'm left absolutely in awe of how far Parkside has come. Looking forward, we will be examining a lot of practices this year and focusing primarily on structures and building system-level foundations, along with the human component with our staff and students. To do that, we'll be soliciting a lot of feedback from parents and other stakeholders in the community. And we want to know how we're doing and what people's thoughts are on what we can do to make Parkside even better than it already is. In learning a little bit about the Narita program, I was very surprised. I didn't know that the Sister City Narita program was going on and was going so strong. I'm very much looking forward to seeing how this works in action this year. I think it's an amazing opportunity and very unique for students to be able to share in this kind of cultural sharing. Thank you for giving me a few minutes and allowing me to introduce myself. I'll hand the floor back over to Mr. Hui.
Thank you, Ethan. Now we'll have Judy Spooner, another Parkside representative, come to speak about her experience in Narita.
Good evening. I'm Judy Spooner. I work at Parkside Middle School as a media aide. And I had the honor to go on this trip with our Parkside students there. And I have so many wonderful memories of that week. It feels like we were there two weeks because we did so much. We were very tired at times, but it was amazing. The students, you guys, were awesome. You were really awesome there and represented our city and our school really well, and we were very proud of you. I am looking forward to this year and having Narita come and visit us again and having our students go back there. I think it's a wonderful program, and I thank the city for keeping it going. It's awesome and wonderful. Also, I want to thank the parents. You guys have not gotten enough appreciation from us, but getting your children to and from all the lessons that we had and the dance lessons that we had and all these things, it was important. You supported your students, and that really meant a lot to us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Now we will have some of the students come up and speak of their experiences, and we're going to start with Mr. Jack Hoyer. Want to come up?
Hello. Honorable city council, my name is Jack Hoyer. I am 13 years old. And Narita has just been such an amazing experience. Not only did I got to go visit Japan, one of my favorite places in the world, and got to experience the culture, but I got to do it with my friends. So, that was pretty cool. Let's see. Some of my favorite things there was they took us to the Disney Sea was their Disneyland. Let's see, what else? Oh, the food. The food was amazing, especially the ramen. Can almost taste it right now.[656.01][656.01](Laughter.) Tastes pretty good. Let's see. Oh, we went to the Automotive College, Nats. That was pretty fun. They were going at least 100 miles. It was pretty intense. Let's see, what else did we do? The Gion Festival for 4th of July, where they honored the sun god. That was pretty cool. Hmm.[669.73][669.73](Laughter.) Well, I blinked out. Okay, thanks for taking us, letting us go to Narita. That's it.[673.73][673.73](Laughter.)
Mayor Ruane and San Bruno city council members. Hi, my name is Sydney Wu, and I am currently a freshman at Cappuccino High School. Going to Narita was one of the best experiences I've ever had. From the nature, to the people, to the food, everything was wonderful. I was overwhelmed with all the host family and temples' hospitality and kindness shown to people they had never met before. Getting to experience the Akasaka Fire Station, the Japan Airlines, and Nihon Automobile College, where we learned so much, but it didn't feel like learning because it was all fun. I'd especially liked going to Taya Junior High School and seeing how, even though we're the same age, how different our lives in and out of school were. This was an adventure I will treasure forever. Thank you for allowing me to be a delegate to our sister city, Narita.
Good evening. My name is Joey Mannahan. I sincerely thank you for giving me the opportunity to go on this trip. It was a great experience and made a lot of great memories. I really liked celebrating my birthday there. It was great. It was -- they had great hospitality, and, yeah, thank you.[746.13][746.13](Laughter.)
Good evening. My name is Rachel Lee Barbia, and, well, hi. And I would like to thank you for the wonderful experience. I got to visit other cultures and community. I made a lot of great memories, and I got to try on a lot of new things, and, yeah.
Good evening. My name is Max Otake. My experience going to Japan through the Narita Exchange Program was an experience I'll never forget. There were so many memories, laughs, and friendships made on this 10-day trip. I could stand here all night telling you of the great times we had, but I'll keep it short and talk about my favorite experience, which was staying at the Japanese temple. At first, I was a little disappointed that we were going to miss 4th of July in San Bruno, which I normally spend with my family and close friends. At first, I wasn't sure what to expect from staying at a Buddhist temple, but I was pretty sure I wasn't going to get barbecue and fireworks like at home.[785.23][785.23](Laughter.) But I was able to forget what I was missing and still enjoy a unique 4th of July with my San Bruno delegates and all the Narita hosts, including the temple monks. We all participated in Japanese dances, explored the beautiful landscape around the temple, meditated, and even had delicious barbecue. We really helped both delegations bond together. Now that we are home, I will always be able to look back at this experience as one of the best times of my life. Lastly, I would like to thank the city of San Bruno for keeping the Sister City Exchange Program alive, and I hope future students can also benefit from this great opportunity. Thank you.
We do have one more student. Unfortunately, he couldn't make it. His name is Tamir Albarus. I could speak on his behalf and just say that I know he had an excellent time when our flight was canceled. I think he was one of the first people to shout very loud of excitement. So, unfortunately, he can't be here, but he would also like to thank the city of San Bruno for giving him the opportunity to go to Japan. So, before I speak upon my experience, I actually have the Narita newsletter where we were actually featured in, so I'm going to pass it out to the councilman real quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I don't know if any of you are fluent in reading Japanese. It's okay. I actually luckily had a friend help translate and summarize the newsletter, and the newsletter pretty much kind of states our trip to Narita, the events we did, and then if you turn to the back, it has a small feature on a few of our students, and a family gave a wonderful summary of having American students in their homes and the wonderful experience they're able to gain from it. So, being that this was my second year going -- you have to excuse me, I read my speech on my phone.[913.20][913.20](Laughter.) So, being this is my second year going, I can't just -- there's nothing -- I can't really put words into it because it almost felt like the first time. Even though I knew the itinerary, you forget the hospitality there. You forget the experiences in terms of where you're going, the scenery, everything. So, it's hard for me to pinpoint one thing because even though, you know, I went to the tea ceremony again, I went to the Automotive College again, I just kept on thinking it was a new experience all over again. And I can definitely speak on behalf of the students and both Miriam and Judy that this was definitely a life-changing experience. You know, I can't help but thank the council so much for giving us the opportunity to go to Japan because it's not, you know, always feasible to go. And I know a lot of people dream of going, you know, like my friends, when I told them I was going for a second time, they were so jealous. They were asking, like, if students drop out, can I fill in? I'm like, that's how it works.[974.13][974.13](Laughter.) So, they were -- I mean, I couldn't help but feel extremely lucky to be going and the fact that at such a young age, they were able to experience so many things that so many people can't get. My favorite thing was probably being reunited with familiar faces. They have great memory. I didn't think that they would remember me, but they do. And, you know, the first thing they always ask is, "How's the city of San Bruno? What is new in San Bruno?" And they still remember their trip here, and they keep on pinpointing how much they love San Bruno, how clean the city is, what the city has to offer. They just speak nothing but great things of San Bruno. So, you know, before we end tonight, I do want to thank, you know, the parents. Thank you so much for being involved with the program and also trusting us, even though we're, you know, teachers and also, you know, a city member. I felt like, I don't know, sending a kid with me to, you know, 3,000 miles to another country, thank you for trusting us. I really appreciate that and your involvement. And lastly, I do want to thank, again, we've said this many times, the city of San Bruno for allowing us to experience something new because I know that not that many people say they can say that they went to Japan and they had a great time doing all these different things. So, again, thank you very much.
And just to wrap it up, as you can tell, everybody's really enthusiastic. It's a wonderful program, and I had a wonderful time. And again, we really appreciate the opportunity, and we're available if you have any questions for us.
Okay. Any questions? Ken?
I don't have any questions. It's been almost 15 years since I went, and I'm dying to go back, and I'll never forget it. It's -- and I can only imagine how these youngsters, their experience. The people in Narita, you know, treated us like royalty and will always be indebted to them, and I loved the program. Thank you.
And on behalf of the entire city council, we're very proud of all of you for the way you represent our city. It's very important to us, and it's a highlight of our council year to send you there, help to send you there, and bring you back safely and listen to some of the things you've experienced. As you all know, we've had our challenges trying to make this work, but we made it, and we're committed to continuing to make this work. So, once again, we're very proud of you and your experience. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next presentation, we're going to present a Childhood Cancer Awareness Month proclamation for the month of September to the parents of Juliana Penna, Patricia Watson, and Jesus Penna. Ken, would you like to say something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And take a quick break if you want to leave right now. Go ahead.
Thank you for having us.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is about a little girl that I met on Facebook a couple of years ago. Her name was Juliana, and she instantly stole my heart. I was immediately taken by how this baby and her family were dealing and fighting cancer. And even though most of the photos were in the hospital room, and even though I can only imagine the hell that her parents and family were going through, she was always a smiling beauty. I want to tell you a little bit more about Juliana, and I took it just from the website. It starts out, "Juliana's presence lit up not just the room, the universe. On April 11, 2011, we learned that our sweet, little 23-month-old daughter had stage-three neuroblastoma, which is a rare form of pediatric cancer. We learned very quickly what this disease was capable of. The next 10 months of Juliana's life were tough, but she was strong, perseverant, happy, and relentless, tougher than any other adult that we've ever met. Juliana battled every day, never looking back, and always with a gorgeous smile on her face. She loved life and made our lives so extraordinarily special. She underwent six rounds of chemo, two abdominal surgeries, countless MIBG, CT, and GFR scans, hundreds of blood draws, dozens of X-rays and tests, had six teeth extracted due to the effects of the chemo, a bone marrow transplant after another harsh round of chemo, 20 rounds of radiation, and two rounds of monoclonal antibody immunotherapy. But as I said, all with a smile on her face. Juliana's life on Earth ended on February 24, 2012, at 7:03 a.m. as she took her final breath in her mom's arms. We told her that we loved her, that we were proud of her, and that we'll never stop fighting for her. Juliana was only 33 months and three days the day she passed away. She still makes us very proud, and we love our daughter more than anything. We have since created Juliana's Journey Foundation, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization created in our daughter's honor. The foundation will help us raise money for pediatric cancer research with our focus primarily on NB, neuroblastoma cancer. We've partnered with UCSF, NANT, New Approaches to Neuroblastoma Therapy, and Battle for a Cure Foundation to help take down childhood cancer." This brings us to why they're here for us tonight. Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to read this proclamation. You should know that I know exactly what you're dealing with. "City Council of the City of San Bruno, State of California. September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, whereas childhood cancer spares no one. Effecting kids from every type of background, and whereas cancer kills more children than asthma, diabetes, cystic fibrosis, congenital anomalies, and pediatric AIDS combined. And whereas childhood cancer research only receives approximately 3.8% of government funding, with 96% delegated to adult cancers. And whereas observing Childhood Cancer Awareness Month during the month of September will provide a special opportunity to offer education on the importance of supporting the funding clinical trials like the collaboration between UCSF and the New Approaches to Neuroblastoma Therapy Consortium. And whereas, along with the city of San Bruno, the city of South San Francisco is committed to raising awareness about childhood cancer with the hope that a cure for this deadly disease will be found. And now therefore be it resolved that the city of San Bruno City Council does hereby recognize the need for funding and awareness for childhood cancer and wishes to honor and support on behalf of Juliana's Journey Foundation, going gold for the month of September." Ken, would you present this, please?
So, we would like to thank Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members for presenting us with this proclamation. It is so imperative that we get awareness out to the public that childhood cancer does exist, and it does take our kids away from us. We've recently also received a proclamation from State Senator Jerry Hill, who actually gave us a proclamation honoring our foundation, and he actually declared September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the entire state of California on August 11, obviously this month, and that hasn't been done in 15 years. So, we've been very lucky that we've been able to get in touch with the right people, and we've touched the right hearts, Ken included. He has been so unbelievably supportive of us since, I mean, almost since Juliana got diagnosed. There was a fundraiser that the Elks threw in the month after Juliana had passed away, and they actually did it with the intent of having Juliana there. And unfortunately, she didn't make it, but Ken has volunteered at every single one of our events. We don't even have to ask him. And the fact that, like I said, that he was able to also get all of you on board just really does mean the world to us, and we appreciate it so very, very much. We are obviously San Mateo County residents. We're very, very proud of our cities. We're very proud to represent the cities that also help us, and we would like to work with you guys to see if there's something that we can do to turn the city gold for the month of September. So, I'm not exactly sure what realm we have, but maybe something at Tanforan, you know, because obviously Tanforan is one of the monuments in San Bruno. But as I said, all with a smile on her face. Juliana's life on earth ended on February 24th, 2012 at 7:03 a.m. as she took her final breath in her mom's arms. We told her that we loved her, that we were proud of her and that we'll never stop fighting for her. Juliana was only 33 months and three days the day she passed away. She still makes us very proud and we love our daughter more than anything. We have since created Juliana's Journey Foundation, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization created in our daughter's honor. The foundation will help us raise money for pediatric cancer research with our focus primarily on NB, neuroblastoma cancer. We've partnered with UCSF, NANT, New Approaches to Neuroblastoma Therapy and Battle for a Cure Foundation to help take down childhood cancer. This brings us to why they're here to, for us tonight. Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to read this proclamation. You should know that I know exactly what you're dealing with. City Council of the City of San Bruno, State of California. September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, whereas childhood cancer spares no one, affecting kids from every type of background and whereas cancer kills more children than asthma, diabetes, cystic fibrosis, congenital anomalies and pediatric AIDS combined. And whereas childhood cancer research only receives approximately 3.8% of government funding with 96% delegated to adult cancers. And whereas observing Childhood Cancer Awareness Month during the month of September will provide a special opportunity to offer education on the importance of supporting the funding clinical trials like the collaboration between UCSF and the New Approaches to Neuroblastoma Therapy Consortium. And whereas, along with the City of San Bruno, the City of South San Francisco is committed to raising awareness about childhood cancer with the hope that a cure for this deadly disease will be found. And now therefore be it resolved that the City of San Bruno City Council does hereby recognize the need for funding and awareness for childhood cancer and wishes to honor and support on behalf of Juliana's Journey Foundation, going gold for the month of September. Ken, would you present this, please?
So we would like to thank uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council members for presenting us with this proclamation. It is so imperative that we get awareness out to the public that childhood cancer does exist and it does take our kids away from us. Um, we've uh, recently also received a proclamation from State Senator Jerry Hill, who actually gave us a proclamation honoring our foundation and he actually declared September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the entire state of California on August 11th, um, obviously this month. And that hasn't been done in 15 years. So um, we've been very lucky that we've been able to get in touch with the right people and we've touched the right hearts, um, Ken included. Um, he has been so unbelievably supportive of us since, since, I mean, almost since Juliana got diagnosed. There was a fundraiser that the Elks threw um, in the month after Juliana had passed away and they actually did it with the intent of having Juliana there. And unfortunately, she didn't make it. But Ken has volunteered at every single one of our events. We don't even have to ask him. Um, and the fact that like I said, that he was able to also get all of you on board just really does mean the world to us and we appreciate it so very, very much. Uh, we are obviously San Mateo County residents. We're very, very proud of our cities. We're very proud to represent um, the cities that also help us. Um, and we would like to work with you guys to see if there's something um, that we can do to turn the city gold for the month of September. So I'm not exactly sure um, what realm we have, but maybe something at Tanforan, you know, because obviously Tanforan is, is one of the monuments in San Bruno. Um, I'm, I couldn't really think of anything else off the top of my head, uh, just when I was sitting here thinking. But if um, if you guys would be willing to work with us, um, trust me, once I get home, I'm sure I'll think of 50 other ideas that I can come up with that I have no problem sharing with you. Uh, so yeah, so um, that's, those are my words. Um, I'm going to go ahead and pass it along to, to my husband, my husband and Juliana's father.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council members and especially you, Ken. We, you have no idea, you know, a total stranger from social media that came along and followed my daughter's story and then just came on your own and volunteered at the first event. And I remember that day, you came up and gave us a big hug and you told us, you know, anything, just ask, you know? It's, it's hard to get that out of people nowadays, you know? And, and you weren't lying because we don't even have to ask. You're just there at every event. You tell us what you, you just tell us what we want you to do and it's like, I feel kind of bad like, well, can you do this? But you know, you have no idea how much that makes us feel, you know, that you, my daughter's touched your heart and you never met her, you know? And I appreciate that very much. Proclamations and awareness like this is very key, you know? A lot of people don't like to hear that this stuff happens to kids, but it's out there. This, this is reality for a lot of parents. A lot of parents that we got to meet, that we're still meeting and we're still talking to, awareness is key and people don't think that, you know, they, it's too sad for little kids. Well, how do you think the little kids feel and these parents feel in the hospital? It's not sad. It's, it's the cutest, it's, it's, the sickness is, just to see these kids fight, it's just, it just shows the resilience in these kids of how much heart they have in, in their body and their fight when they're going through that. And you know, like I said, awareness is key. We've, we're a very small nonprofit organization, but we hope to get big. In the last three months, we've donated $15,000 to UCSF for their clinical trial with the help of, of events and our followers. We have a, a strong following, you know, in the local community and we're trying to get out further. Um, oh, I just drew a blank. Like, like Patricia said about the, um, on the State Senate floor, we were there invited by Jerry Hill and they actually had a vote on that and it passed 36 to nothing unanimously. So that was, that was something big. And Jerry Hill just actually agreed to do an interview with the news, press conference with the news about childhood cancer to get more awareness out there. You know, it's, it's very big that this, that our local cities are doing this, you know, because we need to catch people's attention with this to let them know that this is out there so people could stand up and take a stand, you know? Like breast cancer, everybody knows what October is. Every, they sell pink socks, pink energy drinks, everything, you know? And proceeds of that goes to breast cancer. Now if they do this for our kids, that's a lot more funding for them and that's what we're hoping we can get with just awareness, like I said. So I thank you guys very, very much. You know, this is very, very big to us. We're not stopping here. We'll, you'll see us around. Ken knows that. We, we won't stop. We promised our daughter, like I said, when she took her last breath, I promised her that she would, her fight didn't end there and it's not. And when I'm gone, if there's not a cure, there's still going to be a Juliana Journey Foundation because somebody's still going to be fighting for my daughter and for all these other kids. And I could promise you that, I, I will not stop fighting till the day I'm gone. So, and I thank you guys for jumping on board and hopefully joining this fight with us. Thank you.
Um, I just, I just wanted to mention something really quickly. Today, actually, somebody asked to my, asked me why gold was chosen as the color for childhood cancer awareness. Um, because as you know, pink is for breast cancer and that's obviously because pink is a girly color. Uh, brain cancer is gray because brain is considered gray matter. The reason why, um, it was actually started by the ACCO, which is the American Childhood Cancer Organization. The reason why they chose gold is because gold is a precious metal and children are precious. So that idea stuck. Um, and so that's the reason why gold is the color for childhood cancer. And like I said, we um, we actually have a, a challenge. I'm sure as all of you know about the, the ice bucket challenge that they have. So we started it for, for ALS. We actually started a childhood cancer challenge and we've gotten, obviously we've gotten San Bruno to accept the challenge. Uh, the Oakland Athletics are actually going to do a sell-in auction for us where the proceeds are going to benefit Juliana's Journey Foundation on September 6th. So we're trying, you know, we're, we're getting out there. So um, that's just, that's just a little bit of tidbit, a little tidbit of information I just wanted to share.
All right. Thank you very much and uh, this council is willing to help you and you obviously have a contact on the council already, so uh, we'll work with you.
We'll do everything we can to make September as big as it should be for childhood cancer. And I know now, I'll, I'll never forget your daughter. So we'll work hard too. Thank you. Good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item number five, review of the agenda. Okay. All right, thank you. That's great. Um, no changes to the agenda. Item number six, approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of July 22nd, 2014. Any errors, corrections, omissions? Seeing none, they'll stand approved as submitted. Consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implemented in early or council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen or staff. Any action on the consent?
Moved, you approve?
Second.
Motion and a second on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings. Now we have a public hearing tonight. We're going to hold a public hearing, waive the first reading and introduce three ordinances to implement housing element programs by amending Title 12, land use of the San Bruno Municipal Code as follows. One, add Chapter 12.240 to establish a reasonable accommodation process for persons with disabilities. Two, add Chapter 12.250 to establish a density bonus program. And three, amend Section 12.80.445 to add transitional housing and supportive housing as permitted uses within the definition of special residential care facility.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. This time, we're wrapping up the current housing element cycle. This housing element cycle runs from 2007 through 2014 and we're actually preparing for the next housing element cycle, which runs from 2014 through 2022. And as we complete this cycle, it's necessary that we look at our housing element and look at our implementation program and section to see if there are items yet to be achieved, yet to be satisfied. And as the staff did this work, we noticed that there are several items, several programs that yet need to be completed. So we've been working internally among staff members and with our planning commission and there are actually four separate areas of work that we've been working on. One has to do with emergency shelters and the other three, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned, having to do with reasonable accommodations, density bonus and transitional and supportive housing. All of these areas are required to be addressed by state law. There is actually adopted state legislation in all of these areas that requires local jurisdictions like the city of San Bruno to adopt local ordinances to implement sections in their code to address these matters. Pertaining to emergency shelters, as we brought this subject to the planning commission and we addressed this in May of this year with the planning commission, there was quite a bit of discussion about where emergency shelters should be located, um, what's the population of people needing emergency shelters here in San Bruno? What has the impact been pertaining to shelters or housing that has been provided here in San Bruno? And the planning commission decided after receiving comments from a number of different individuals to ask that a study session be held to look at the matter of emergency shelters in more depth and that staff research and collect information and bring it back to the council and commission for consideration for direction on how to go about preparing a draft ordinance to implement the state requirement to provide for emergency shelters here in San Bruno. Pertaining though to the other areas, having to do with reasonable accommodations, density bonus, transitional and supportive housing, the draft ordinances that were presented to the planning commission in May and discussed at that meeting in May, the commission felt comfortable moving those forward for consideration by the city council. We brought those ordinances to you, to the city council at a study session in July of this year, July 8th of this year, and we reviewed those draft ordinances with you. First off, with reasonable accommodations, the concept here with reasonable accommodations is that an individual or individuals with disabilities should have an equal right to housing within the state of California. The state has mandated that local jurisdictions put in place a procedure whereby people with disabilities can require exceptions to zoning and planning laws so that they can enjoy housing as others would enjoy housing in, in a particular community. The exceptions would be things like allowing for ramps, let's say, in a setback area, to give you a single example. The next area has to do with density bonus and in the area of density bonus, as we well know, there's a strong concern throughout the state about providing for affordable housing for all segments of the population. One tool to do that, that the state has now mandated that local jurisdictions put in place is state density bonus law. Essentially, there are several aspects to, to this provision and Mark Sullivan, our long-range planner, will talk to you about this ordinance in more detail, but some highlights are, for example, that as a developer proposes a certain number of affordable housing units within a project of a certain category, say low or very low or moderate, based on the number of units being proposed in a development project, the developer would be entitled, per state mandated, mandated density bonus law, a certain number of additional units. Up to 35% would be the total maximum, uh, based on affordability. And for senior housing, it's a 20% increase in the number of units. Additionally, besides the density bonus in terms of units for the number of affordable units being provided, there are provisions for concessions, waivers and incentives. And we'll talk to you more about those in a few minutes. The objective here really is to encourage, provide opportunities for more affordable housing within our communities while at the same time allowing for local communities to look at local concerns and issues and to try to address those. So it's a balancing act. So there's a state mandate here and I think in terms of drafting this ordinance, what we've tried to do, and Mark will go into more detail about this and we'll be happy to talk to you more about this as we move forward, we've tried to balance the state mandate as well as local interest and how we're proposing this, this ordinance be put in place. So that's a little bit about density bonus at this point. The, the last item, the third issue that we're actually bringing forward to you tonight has to do with transitional and supportive housing. And transitional housing has to do with providing housing typically for six months or more where one is transitioning perhaps from a situation of homelessness to looking for and finding permanent housing within a community. And supportive housing has to do with housing for populations that need support typically. This can be housing for people that have mental health issues as an example and this would be housing that would be provided on a more ongoing or permanent basis. And again, there would be a support aspect to it. So we're bringing forward these, these three ordinances for your consideration with the understanding that the fourth area, emergency shelters, we would be coming back to the city council at a future date at a scheduled study session to talk to you more about and provide you information more about different locations for such housing, uh, looking at our local population, its needs, possible impacts or experiences we've had in the past in terms of working with this population. Why are we doing this? It's state mandated is why we're doing it. Uh, this is a state mandated, uh, provision. We have gone through a process with this current housing element where we have an adopted and certified housing element. We've indicated to the State Department of Housing that we would implement this current housing element and these ordinances are part of the implementation that was understood when we went through the adoption and certification process in 2010. The state is telling us also that as we satisfy the requirements of the current certified housing element by implementing these programs, we're entitled, if we do that, to a more expedited review in terms of this next cycle. Right now, our staff is actually preparing the housing element update as part of a regional effort, working with 21 elements to bring before you later on this year, the proposed housing element for this next cycle, uh, 2014 through 2022. By complying with the state requirements for the current cycle, we would be entitled to an expedited review through housing and community development at the state level for this next housing element. And we would be entitled to an eight-year cycle, um, for this next housing element all the way out to 2022. And if we don't satisfy the requirements of the current cycle, then we would need to come back in four years, not eight years. So we would have to basically double our effort. That's, that's a bit of background in terms of the housing element process, where we stand now, why we're moving forward with, with these particular ordinances to kind of bring these requirements into our municipal code. Mr. Sullivan has more information, will go through the ordinances in a little bit more detail and then we'd be happy to respond to any of your questions. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. As David mentioned, adoption of these three ordinances is a requirement of state law and also a requirement to, um, for our, our current housing element to remain in compliance with state housing law. So what I'm going to do is just, is just briefly go through the three ordinances and uh, and try to address your comments at the July 8th study session. So the first one is a reasonable accommodation ordinance. Again, this is a mandate by the state and the purpose of the reasonable accommodation ordinance is to ensure that individuals with disabilities are able to enjoy housing in the same way as any other resident in the community. The ordinance as written, uh, provides a process to request modifications to zoning requirements to allow access to and more convenient use of housing for a disabled person. Examples include, um, a ramp that encroaches into a setback, um, lowered railing, um, and possibly even an elevator shaft. The ordinance, as was written before, authorizes the community development director to review and approve such requests. And the council commented that someone other than the community development director should also be authorized, authorized to approve these requests and we simply added, uh, we simply modified the, uh, the ordinance to include, um, the community development directors designate, uh, to be able to review and approve requests. So that's, that's how that one was, was addressed. As to the density bonus law, this is also a state mandated process which has been in place with some adjustments for 10 years. So developers have had, had the ability to request density bonuses since actually 2004. It's only in this current housing element cycle that cities were required to incorporate the density bonus law into their local municipal codes. The basic density bonus provides a housing project that produces affordable housing, additional units, uh, depending on the amount of, of, of affordable units that are, are in the project. And as David mentioned, it's up to 35% total. For example, um, a, a project that included, includes 5% very low income units would be allowed a 20% density bonus. So that would be 20% above the original number of units that were proposed. For a low income project, for low income units, it would be 10%. So it's, it's sort of a sliding scale depending on the depth of affordability and the number of affordable units. And as David mentioned, the, the law also provides an across-the-board 20% increase for senior housing, which is included in, in our local ordinance. The law also allows an applicant to request from one to three concessions or incentives to development standards as needed to contribute to an affordable housing's financial feasibility. So concessions and incentives are pretty much used interchangeably. They're kind of the same thing. So essentially, they're, um, requests for a reduction of development standards such as setbacks, lot coverage, um, any, any local regulation that, uh, that governs land use and, uh, development on property. So as I said, one to three concessions and those concessions, the concessions are allowed based on the number of, the percentage of affordable units in the project. So the more, it's on a sliding scale and um, and so that's- And so that's mandated by state law, and that's included in our ordinance. Currently, the city has very little control over the density bonus process, what is requested or what is approved, and the state does not specify what concessions or incentives an applicant can request. So what we've done in this ordinance, and this is sort of in response to your question the last time about what flexibility the city has in the concessions that it offers. And so the proposed ordinance provides some control over the process. So in fact, an applicant could apply for any concession they want to. That's simply allowed by state law. But what we've done is, in our process, we've identified certain concessions and incentives which we feel would contribute to making a project more feasible and at the same time have a limited impact on community interests and, you know, the surrounding community. And that would be a relatively simple process, where a developer would make the request and then, through a simple analysis, justify that request. And these are specified in the ordinance, and they include incentives such as -- let me just get the list here. Okay, there it is. Okay. As reduced parcel sizes or dimensions, building separation requirements, usable open space, floor area ratio, maximum coverage by structures, and deferral until occupancy of development fees. So those would be, as I said, through a simple process, and we feel that a developer would be more likely to just choose one of those because it would be relatively simple. If they were to request any, all other incentives would require a more involved process, including a detailed pro forma and a lot more information to justify why they need the concession or I should also mention that an applicant can also request a waiver. I'm just bringing this out there because this is over and above concessions. So a concession is basically to make a project more financially feasible, and if, in the end, a developer feels that the project cannot be built because of physical limitation, they can also request a waiver to a development standard. And just so that you know that there are concessions, incentives, and waivers. In any case, the city council would give the final approval for concessions, incentives, and waivers. So every application for concessions or incentives or waivers would come to the city council. The planning commission could approve density bonuses, but not concessions. The city council also commented that there could be unintended consequences contrary to city interests, especially, for example, within the transit corridors plan area. And staff would like to point out that the transit corridors plans, standards, and guidelines were developed to facilitate financially feasible projects. So we think that there's a very small chance that a density bonus would even be necessary in the transit corridors area because it was a market-based plan that was designed to encourage the type of development I think that, you know, density bonus projects would This is, of course, if the ballot measure is approved, and, you know, there would be some changes depending on that. And it should also be noted that compliance with the Transit Corridors Plan residential protection measures would still be a consideration in this process. The city council also expressed a strong interest, or has expressed a strong interest in providing affordable housing in the community. And at this point, the city has few options to produce affordable housing since the elimination of redevelopment and the Palmer Court decision, which invalidates rental inclusionary housing programs. The density bonus program is one tool to promote affordable housing in the community. So that's our density bonus program. And the last issue is the transitional and supportive housing ordinance, and this, again, is mandated by state law. And the state law requirement is to remove constraints to transitional and supportive housing by permitting this type of housing by right as a residential use, like any other residents of the same type in the same zoning district. First, I'll define the terms again. For transitional housing, it means rental housing for stays of at least six months, but where the units are recirculated to another program recipient for a set period, usually not longer than two years. Transitional housing may be designated for a homeless individual or family transitioning to permanent housing. Supportive housing means housing with no limit on the length of stay that is occupied by the target population, which is defined in the state statute. And it is linked to onsite or offsite services that assist supportive housing residents in retaining the housing, improving his or her health status, maximizing his or her ability to live, and where possible, to work in the community. The target population is defined by state law to mean persons with low incomes who have one or more disabilities, including mental disabilities, AIDS, or other chronic health conditions, or individuals eligible for services provided under the Lanterman Act, which is basically individuals with developmental disabilities. Staff sought to address the city council comments by modifying the definition of special residential care facility to include transitional and supportive housing, which are permitted by right in residential zones. This gives a certain level of control, limiting the number of residents to six or fewer in a project. And the city council was concerned about the ability to require state licensing, and it should be noted that licensing would be required in certain cases, but if the tenants are independent and do not need support services, licensing would not be required, and the city is not in a position to require it. And that concludes my presentation on the three ordinances.
Any questions of staff at this time, before we open the public hearing?
Through the chair?
Michael.
I just wanted to ask on the handout that we received at the beginning of the meeting, can we get a summary of what changes are in this versus what we had in our original
Councilmember, I'd be happy to do that. There's really a single change that you'll find there. In some areas in the density bonus draft ordinance that we're proposing, we had indicated only concessions or only incentives. The two should be named together. So standard throughout, it should be concessions and incentives, concessions and incentives. So we did a global change through that density bonus to indicate concessions and incentives. That's the only change. Thank you.
Anything else?
Through the chair.
I was going to ask the same question because I haven't had an opportunity to go through this. Maybe if we're getting something at this hour, could we have it stand out or something so we can, our eyes can quickly?
I apologize for that. We should have done that, certainly.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right, this time we'll open the public hearing. Anyone from the public elect to address the city council on this issue? All right, if we close the public hearing, you're precluded from talking about this to us after. Motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any discussion or action by the council?
The density bonuses, that's offered to predominantly new construction, new developments?
Yes.
And so then the other two ordinances, the ones on -- come on, remind me. On the reasonable accommodations and then the transitional housing. Are there any incentives for, any state incentives or funding for providers to, you know, to provide that type of, you know, I guess, structure or accommodations, you know, for the community? We know that there are tax credits, you know, and some state fundings available, you know, for, you know, for low and affordable housing, for new developments. But there's, you know, what is the incentive to, you know, say, for instance, a multi-residential owner in an existing building, you know, to want to provide low-income, you know, housing to an existing building, you know, to get funding or something and maybe some incentives? Do they exist? Do they exist?
Yes, they do. There was, there were funds through a bond measure that are slowly being depleted, but they were, it was a very large sum of money, and a certain amount of it was dedicated to, you know, supportive housing, emergency shelter, persons with disabilities. So that periodically, you know, that funding becomes available, and there's a new source of affordable housing funds that's apparently coming through the state right now, being considered. And, you know, my understanding is that there will be funding available for this type of housing.
Because what I'm getting at, and I realize that there is, there's a shortage of housing for different types of members of our community, whether they be elderly, whether they be intellectually disabled or even physically disabled. We, you know, there is, there's programs where, and there's a demand to have adult care in residential areas, and people pay a lot of money, you know, to take advantage of that. If there's no incentive to provide transitional housing, if there's no incentive to provide, you know, housing for, you know, for physically disabled, then, you know, what, you know, where is the state going with these mandates, or what do they expect?
Yeah, just briefly, I think a lot of this is part of the sort of anti-discrimination laws, is so that to treat these, this type of housing just like any other housing. And I, you know, there have been some problems in some communities. So that's the purpose, I think fundamentally, but what you're talking about is how do you produce more of it? How do you accommodate, you know, those populations?
Okay. Any questions, discussion, or action by the council?
Through the chair. I have a question. So the concessions, you said that the builder, the developer would have the option of requesting these, and then they would still come to the council for approval. And I'm wondering, the way things are today, a developer could ask for exceptions from whatever guidelines we have. I think people do that now. They, if they want to do something different, if they want to exceed limits that we have, they can make that request, and it will go through the planning commission, and they can appeal that and bring it to us. So what is really different about what's, what are we changing? What, do they have any additional rights? Is there a higher burden on us to deny or approve that?
Councilmember, there is a higher burden on us. I think that you're describing where people may ask for a variance to a development standard today, outside of this density bonus ordinance that we're discussing this evening. And so that's a different process. There are findings for a variance, for deviation from a development standard, like a setback, for example. In this case, with the incentives and concessions, the idea is that they are linked really to providing for affordable housing units. They're essentially an opportunity or reward for individuals who are willing to include affordable housing units within their development projects. And so that's a major difference. And so with that, though, they still need to demonstrate that, as Mr. Sullivan indicated, that these concessions and incentives are needed, necessary, to make the project affordable. So that's a key burden for them with respect to this process. But in a sense, it's an incentive, it's a reward for them, providing affordable housing units within our community, and a tool to obtain, hopefully, more affordable housing units here in San Bruno and across the state.
So I don't know if I read this correctly, but it appears that, it said somewhere in here that they are not required to provide any sort of financial proof of what they're claiming is required to make the project profitable for them. So are we just going to take their word if they say, you know, we have some guidelines in place now that say, okay, this should be a profitable project within these parameters? They can come in and say, well, no, we really need to build more. We need to expand more. We need to add more units to make it, to make what we think is profitable, or what they think is profitable. So do we need to just accept whatever they tell us?
No, not necessarily at all. In fact, the way the ordinance is set up was to try to direct the applicants, the prospective developers, to concessions and incentives that would seem more in keeping with the policies and development objectives of San Bruno, and that the test was lower in those cases. And where they would deviate into areas where we would have more concern in terms of community impacts, they would need to demonstrate at a higher level with more detailed analysis and pro forma information that indeed that particular request is necessary. So the way we drafted this was to try to really guide applicants to those incentives or concessions that seem more in keeping or less of a concern in terms of community objectives.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Irene?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank you for how responsive you were to all our comments. It wasn't easy, I'm sure. There's a lot of detail in this. And let me just make the statement, and you tell me if I'm right or wrong. So if we don't approve this or some variation of what you presented to us, the state, what the state has dictated is like the default position of whatever we're doing. So what you have here is really more accommodating to our own community and to our community concerns and the concerns that you heard from the council from the last time we had a study session on this. Is that?
That's extremely accurate.
Oh, good. I go for that.
No, it really is because the default, for example, if we don't adopt this, an applicant, a developer, could come in and basically claim state law in any case. And so what we've tried to do, based on your comments, in all three areas, actually, is to try to hone, guide applications to be more in keeping with local community interests.
Okay. And I read this two or three times, and the more I read it, the more I realized that was what you were doing, and that you provided quite a few safeguards for developers not coming in and saying, well, we're just going to do this, and we don't really care what you guys say or do. So I appreciate that. And the other piece is, when it reaches a certain level, it, okay, right now, it goes to the planning commission, things go to the planning commission. If the planning commission approves it or doesn't approve it, it kind of, that's where it goes unless somebody appeals something. This has the safeguards that when it reaches a certain level, it automatically goes to the city council. It's not something that there's an appeal about or whatever. It just automatically goes there. So I appreciate that part in there as well. So having said all those things, I really can't think of any way to improve this, so there you are.
Any comments or questions or action by the council? Mark, do we have to do these separately?
Yes, I would, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Action by the council?
Oh, I'll introduce the resolution. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, I will wave the first reading or move to wave the first reading.
Okay, third second.
Second.
So motion is second to waive the first reading. Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
And now I'll introduce the resolution.
There's three.
Three, you wanna, can I do them all three?
No.
Okay, I will introduce the first one, which is the, sorry about that.
Density bonus.
The ordinance of the city to, to implement adopted policies of the housing element for reasonable accommodations.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
And then the ordinance for the density bonus.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
And, last but not least, is the ordinance, thank you, for land use for housing, transitional and supportive housing.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item number nine, public comment on items not on this agenda. As the council's policy refer matters raised in this forum, to staff for investigation or action where appropriate, the Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council under public comment? Just tell us your name and street. Thank you.
Allison Jenkins, 809 Skycrest. I am here representing the homeowners at Skycrest Home Development 24. We have a concern with the garbage rates that have transpired over less than a two-year period. I have not been at the location very long. I moved in October of last year and I received an increased notice in January of this year that was roughly four percent. I just, we received yet another increased notice for July of this year for another rough, roughly three and a half percent. When I called and spoke to the customer service representative at the city regarding this, she really couldn't help me as to why this was happening, but she was very helpful in offering that yet there was going to be another increase in January of 2015, which was gonna be another roughly two and a quarter percent. And, again, representing 24 homeowners who are, most of them are fairly new, this is quite an impact and we're just concerning, concerned as to why.
Okay. As I said, we really can't address it this evening.
That's fine.
But what I'll do is why don't you give your name and number to a city clerk and we'll have somebody from finance contact you and explain it all.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Item 10, conduct of business. We're gonna receive an oral report from the Culture and Arts Commission regarding placement of the Centennial mural at Posey Park.
Good evening, Mayor Ruane, members of the city council. I'm John Alita, the Assistant Community Services Director. We're here tonight to give you an oral report and update on the progress with the Centennial Mosaic mural project. As a matter of some brief background, this project originally came to the council in April of last year as a centennial art project. It was approved to be on a site on Sneath Lane, but as the, as time passed and the grade separation project was finished and the new Posey Park was completed, there was a lot of community discussion about that being a more suitable site for the project due to its significance in celebrating the city's first 100 years of incorporation. So at the end of June, on the 24th, you did approve a change order to have the artist reformat that piece that was going to be on Sneath Lane for Posey Park. And we are here tonight to give you some visuals as to how that is shaping up and to kind of show you where we're going. The other thing to, we wanted to mention as well is that we are, you know, in conversations with the Joint Powers Board regarding that site. It is property than walls that is there, is what we are in conversations with them about getting the approvals to, to put the, the mosaic mural project on that site. Before I, I continue, I do wanna make sure I acknowledge that we have several members of the Culture and Arts Commission here tonight, Chair Tammy Parker, Vice Chair Pamela Madden, and Commissioners Karen Livinggood and Bardi Rosman Kujin, as well as the artist. So, without further ado, I wanna kind of give you a few slides to give you some, orient you a little bit to the project and how it's looking. This is a panoramic shot of the, of the area, so you can kind of get a sense of the context. The wall that is in, that we're going to be looking at is this wall right here. And you can see the, the train platform to the, to the left and the, and the rest of the park to the right. This is the, excuse me. This is the design as you originally saw it before it was reformatted. It covers a period of San Bruno's history from earlier periods of, you know, the dairy farms through the development of transportation and some references to the Posey Parade and then a kind of look to the future. With the, the new site, I'm gonna see if I can click this mouse correctly, so pardon me if I don't. There we go. This is a closer, close-up version of the wall. And then this next image is, we've superimposed some drawings from the artist over the walls to give you a kind of a perspective as to how that would look once it's installed. You can see we have our well-dressed human scale model here to, to give you a sense of, I think it's Don Draper from Mad Men. However, so you can see that the, the height of the scale model as well as the, the mosaic mural are going to be a life size. The, this next slide shows some closer up images of the drawings. As a reminder, these are going to be mosaic tile, so these are drawings that the artist is then going to, you know, compose with mosaic tile when the project is completed. So, early, early San Bruno references to the cattle, horse racing, horse raising and the dairy farms, followed by the, the advent of the rail transportation, our history of horse racing as well as early aviation, and then the Posey Parade, as well as some more modern aircraft to kind of show our evolution as a city. And then this last image is sort of a look to the future with these figures, looking at a sort of future, futuristic version of San Bruno. The, the project in terms of timeline, I wanted to give you a little update on that. We expect the project to be about 50% complete by mid-October. And then after the staff checks in with the artist on the status of seeing a few completed panels, then we will anticipate the completion and delivery of the rest of the project by mid-December. The, this last slide is simply to show you that there is this sort of feature wall, if you, I think you've all probably been down there, that's on, the fountain is on either side of it. The Community Services Director will be back at a later date to talk to you a little bit more about the, how the, the park will be identified with some, either some signage or some, some kind of placard, but just wanted to tell you we'd be back for that at a future date. And at this point, if you have any questions about the progress, we'd be happy to answer them.
John, I have a question. The, the wall is curved. Will the panels be curved to match the wall?
We are looking at a couple of different options. One of them is to work with some, either some back rub board or some, we've talked about some, perhaps even some very light metallic backing boards. The other option that we discussed briefly would be to, we might be able to use spacers behind the panels to kind of give them more of a curvature on, as they're placed on the wall. So we're still in the stages of deciding what would be the best option.
Okay.
Talking, talking about the panels again, and maybe it was explained previously with the other site, is the entire panel tile, is it all one, one, you know, you know, obviously different colors and tiles or whatever, but is the entire panel a mosaic or is it just certain parts of the figures? So, so when you show me that panel, those five different panels, is that whole panel?
As I understand it, and Margarita can nod, yes, the, all the, it's all the colored sections that you see, that's all a rectangular panel, it's gonna be all tile. Yes.
So I'm assuming it's, it's a fairly heavy, judging by the scale of the person standing next to it, it's, that's a heavy panel. So we're gonna need...
We're gonna need to anchor it well.
Need some sort of, yeah, real anchor, you know, and framing or whatever, just to, you know, make sure that hopefully it doesn't, you know, fray at the edges or something.
Yeah.
There we go. The chair. What steps are being taken to protect the art as far as vandalism or graffiti?
The art is going to be anti-graffiti coated. The, the strength of the tile and its bonding, as far as I understand, is pretty resistant to, to tampering and to vandalism. Of course, if someone really wants to do some damage, they might, but we, we also have provisions in the contract to have the artist return if there is something that needs to be replaced or fixed at a future time.
Great. Anything else? Michael?
Through the chair. Lighting in the area? I, I know when we were talking about doing this on Sneath, there was gonna be some consideration about putting additional lighting there. What's the situation here?
Right now, it would just be the ambient lighting that's in the plaza from the, you can see some of the lights along the, near the benches as well as the lighting in the fountains.
Okay. So in that picture, you can't really see any, any light poles, but are there any directly in front of there on the street?
You know, I, I can't remember. I, I don't believe so.
Is it? Okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Great, we're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 11 is the Report of Commission's Boards and Committees Received the Annual Report from the Culture and Arts Commission.
I was enjoying the mosaic presentation and wasn't paying attention. Sorry. I apologize. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Tammy Parker. I'm the Chair of the Culture and Arts Commission and along with my fellow commissioners, we'd like to present our year in review, 2013, 2014. The commission is responsible for promoting the artistic development of the community and preserving San Bruno's diverse cultural heritage. The commission's goal, goals include acquiring and maintaining public art as well as sponsoring programs and events that enhance the quality of our lives for the residents and improve the image and character of the community. We received city council approval for the Centennial Mosaic mural design and entered into a contract with the artist. This project will commemorate the city's 100th anniversary and incorporate, sorry, 100th anniversary of incorporation depicting scenes from San Bruno's history. The goal of the project is to recognize and celebrate the city's past, present, and its aspirations for the future. Installation anticipated in the fall. Let's see here, we hosted international, oh, international children's art in the art exhibit pieces, excuse me, from San Bruno Sister City, Narita, Japan this year. And that was in the library, obviously. And then this is the second year of gallery exhibit program in the city library. We had one artist from San Bruno, three from San Mateo County, and one from San Francisco, as well as one from the East Bay. This is the sixth year of movies in the park. It continues to be a very popular thing that San Bruno families especially seem to enjoy. This year, the movies will be held following an expanded program of concerts in the park and we're excited about that because that is such a popular program as well. So it should make a wonderful evening for families. And then we're, we did Shakespeare in the Park. San Francisco Shakespeare Festival performed Julius Caesar in October of 2013. And for your consideration for the year 2014, 2015, we are looking at the completion of the Centennial Mosaic mural at Posey Park, continue the gallery exhibit program at the library, host 2015 Narita International Children's Exhibit artwork, present movies in the park as well. We will present Shakespeare in the Park in conjunction with food trucks. We're looking at that option. Recommend an art project along Sneath Lane. Several of our commissioners are not giving up on Sneath Lane, so we are going to develop, we, if I'm allowed to digress for a moment, I had a wonderful meeting with Skyline College, John and I, and began a dialogue and perhaps we'll be working with the college and the students for Sneath Lane. So I'm very, very excited about the project and the idea is not just for them to do the artwork, but they would participate in the approval process in coming here to the city council as well so that they can learn more about what it takes to work in the world of public art. Okay. Oh, and another project is art on the signal boxes. We want to develop a theme so that they're just not haphazardly painted around the town, but several cities have done this process and it's kind of a fun project. And again, perhaps we can involve families with that project, I don't know. Wherever your imagination can go. And we'll host a poetry series in the library, host, host an educational forum for other local art organization, and continue to develop the commission's vision for future art projects. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Tammy? Well, as I do with all of the commission's boards and committees, you guys are doing a great job. It's kind of the, the foundation of this city. A lot of people don't realize it's all volunteer, but you guys have the advantage of having one of the more fun and interesting commission's boards and committees.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so it's, it's a lot of fun. I've had a chance to attend a few of your meetings and I look forward to attending more and keep going, 'cause it's getting very creative and, and you can see the energy out there. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 12, comments from council members? Anything? Irene?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to thank a lot of people. This Saturday, we had our tree planting, our second tree planting for our Centennial Tree Project that is sponsored by the city and the Beautification Task Force. We had members from the Lions, from the Beautification Task Force. We had a couple of council members come. We had students from Cappuccino, just a lot of people who came and went out with maps and tools and went and dug holes and planted trees. So we planted 46 trees this week and we are on our way to our goal of 100, so we are planning on two more planting sessions of 25-ish each. And hopefully we'll be able to report to the council that we've done our 100 trees. So I would like to thank all those people. The ground was hard and they worked really through difficult times, but we got it all done, so thank you very much.
Great. Anything else, Ken?
While we're, while we're thanking people, something I like to do every time, now that summer is done, I drive through the park a handful of times every day and every summer, when you see that park full of, of children and the programs, the after, I mean, the, the summer playground programs, it's amazing. It just really is testament to what we provide to our community and to our families. And I'm just very pleased that we have... And I'm just very pleased that we have such a very popular program and so many kids get to take advantage of it. And then it goes all the way through to the Friday nights and I think these probably really good, great idea to expand concerts in the park. It's just ramping up. We're finishing up August and we've got another month to go. And so, very popular, brings the entire community out and coupling that with, with the movies after, I think it's, people are going to really enjoy themselves and get ready for the holidays. That's, thank you to staff. Thank you, you know, that's your programs and all around, just do a great job. Thank you.
Great. Anything else? Item 13, we will be going to closed session. We have two. The first is a conference with real property negotiator pursuant to government code section 54956.8. The property is 324 Florida Avenue, San Bruno. The agency negotiator is the city manager. Negotiating parties are the city of San Bruno and the Clayton family under negotiation price and terms of payment. The second is a conference with real property negotiator pursuant to government code section 54956.8. The property is parcel numbers 020013250 and 020013260. The agency negotiator is the city manager. The negotiating parties are the city of San Bruno and the OTC Development LLC and under negotiation price and terms of payment. Meeting is adjourned until our next council meeting on September the 9th, 2014.